At this time, it is my pleasure to call the April 2024 meeting of your hand of a rural council order. I request that we stand and recite our pledge of allegiance in unison. We'll follow that with a brief moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and please be seated. Secretary Felix, let's call the roll.
Mr. Fuentes, Mrs. Funk?
Here.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Here.
Mr. Bub?
Here.
Mr. Hegberg?
Here.
Mr. Kress?
Here.
Mr. Lookinbill?
Here.
Mr. Ricart?
Here.
Mr. Rowland?
Here.
Dr. Rupp?
Here.
Solicitor Shultis?
Here.
Manager Lewis?
Here.
Mayor Whitman?
Here.
Secretary Felix, we have a quorum.
Thank you. Earlier this evening, council did participate in an executive session. I'll let our solicitor tell you why.
Council met an executive session from 6:45 to about 7:12 involving items under Section 708A, 4, and 5 of the Sunshine Act, specifically the Guthrie Memorial Library and the Rental Registration and Inspection Ordinance.
Thank you. At this time, we'll open up the in-room portion for public comment. I have three speakers before me. We'll start with Mr. Becker.
Good evening, Art Becker. 529 Carlisle Street, Hannover. As you know, I represent numerous landlords, tenants, and borough taxpayers who oppose the proposed rental unit registration and inspection ordinance. There are several reasons for this. First, this is the same ordinance that was proposed two years ago in November of 2022 by Mr. Hegberg. That night, he made a motion for support and approval of that motion. He did not get a second. It died that night. This is the exact same ordinance that Borough Council rejected in November of 2022. The only difference is there is a reference to the Office of Code Enforcement, which did not exist in November '22. So it's the same thing you've already looked at two years ago, you've already said no to. And it's important to note, I think, that we still don't have answers to the questions we asked in November '22. How much is this going to cost? We don't know. We have not had any discussion, any information about that. What's it going to cost the taxpayers? It's going to take a platoon of people to coordinate the inspection, the reinspection, and enforcement of 3,300 rental properties in the borough. Second, what will the inspection fees be? We asked that night. Same question, no answer. Is it going to be $100, $200, $400? What are we inspecting? Well, it looks like we're inspecting everything now. Fire, safety, HVAC, IPMC, which is electrical, plumbing, Hannover Borough ordinance. I'm not aware of anyone that's licensed and able to perform all of those inspections. Maybe they exist. Two years ago, no one had those licenses to perform all those inspections. So how many people are going to need to do these inspections? What about the reinspections? What's that going to cost? If landlords don't cooperate, who's going to enforce the ordinance against them? If you have 3,300 rental properties and you end up charging $400 a property for these inspections and reinspections, that's $1.3 million that the landlords are going to have to front. And guess what? They're going to raise rents and ultimately look to tenants to reimburse them for those costs. Tenants, the least likely of the people in our community to afford those increases. How would the penalty phase be implemented? If a landlord has two properties, he or she has to have a license for each, right? That's what the ordinance says. And what if each property has four units? And what if one has a code violation? Does the landlord lose his or her license for all four units in that one property? Or does the landlord lose only a license for the one unit? Do they have to have eight licenses for those four units? If there is a code violation and the landlord loses his or her license, what happens then? Do we have to kick the tenant out? If the landlord doesn't have a basis to do that, the tenants comply with their lease. Who's going to evict the tenant? The borough? The landlord doesn't have a basis to do it. Does this even make sense to anyone? Second, the survey that went out a few months ago. I submit it didn't prove anything. The borough specifically, first, voted not to spend $9,000 on that survey, but the borough had already spent the money. It was already spent by the time that vote was put up and taken. The survey itself repeatedly referenced the Rental Unit Registration and Inspection Program. Which one? We have one. Right now, you're required to register rental properties in the borough. Code enforcement is allowed to inspect them. So when you look at this survey, does that mean, which program was it referring to? The one we have or the one that Mr. Hegberg proposed two years ago? It didn't say. And it wasn't very clear what we're even talking about. If 500 people out of 16,000 responded, what is that, 3%? That's not a mandate. And who responded? We don't even know. Did they live in the borough? There's no transparency in this process. No one was involved in preparing the questions. No one saw the questions before they went out. No one knows who even responded. Finally, let me make a suggestion to council if I could, please. Revise the current proposal that's on the table so that landlords who do not correct three code violations within a year, then they have to obtain a license, and they get the inspections. Or you could tier the gravity of a violation so that one very serious code violation would require a landlord to obtain a license and have periodic inspections. I think this type of an ordinance would satisfy the taxpayers, the tenants, and the landlords. One, it gives code enforcement the ability to put the bad landlord on the list to be monitored closely with licensing, renewals, and inspections. No pushback from us on that. Second, it saves the borough countless hours and taxpayers enormous amounts of money inspecting thousands of properties that don't need it. And third, it gives landlords an incentive to be code compliant. If you don't want the hassle of licensing and inspections, then be code compliant. It even rewards good landlords and their tenants who don't have to incur the inspection costs and higher rents because of that. So at this juncture, I'd ask that you table the request to advertise this proposed ordinance. Give us an opportunity to go back and draft an alternate ordinance that's consistent with this proposal, that incorporates the concerns of everyone at the table. The borough, code enforcement, landlords, tenants, bring it back to the Safety Committee or this committee for further discussion and a vote to implement. We would support that. Thank you.
Next, I have Phil Redding.
Address? Address 230 Stock Street.
Go ahead.
First of all, I want to second everything that Art Becker just said. As to the current inspection system that we have now, where we have code violations and people calling in and reporting them, I think that was one of the things that we talked about last time. Did we do a review of that program, of our current program? I think that was a question that we threw out there, and hopefully we get an answer tonight about that. And yeah, I thought Art's idea and proposal would be good, maybe just to even amend our current system that we have by focusing on the bad actors, the bad landlords, and really focusing on them and rewarding good landlords. All right? So, thank you very much.
Okay. Lastly, in room, we have Robert Holt. Mr. Holt?
Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you.
Robert Holt, PO Box 1131, Hannover. First, Mr. President, I want to say thank you for dealing with the York Street property that's on your agenda tonight. I know it wasn't easy. It's been a bit of a headache, but it was the right thing to do, and I appreciate that, even though I don't have any interest in it. And that is why I'm going to ask you to delay any action on an agreement to operate a boat rental operation on the Longarm and Shepherd Myers properties. It's been rather quickly put together, it seems. There hasn't been much discussion. I think there's a lot of issues to be dealt with, such as building permits, traffic impact assessments, and how we're going to protect the water quality in the reservoir. That is critical, and we know how critical it is with the experiences over the last summer and the drought. And I think there should be a public hearing before we undertake such an operation. And we're not even talking about who's going to provide the security for that. Is that going to be more stress on the local police And lastly, I've listened to this discussion about the landlord-tenant ordinance. Neither, but I also know that the costs could be significant in hiring new manpower and what comes with that. And I think it is, if there's a way to reach a compromise, I think that's a good idea and maybe to step back from what you have and see if you can't work it out. Because as an individual property owner, who, I guess in a way I am a tenant because I have a mortgage every month at a bank, I sure had to think that I'm paying for a rental inspection program when I'm not part of the problem, and the costs look to be, like, they could be significant. And I'm not saying, you know, something shouldn't be done, but I think there's a potential to find another way. And it's maybe just if we can have more discussion without it being a delay tactic. And I thank you for your time.
Okay. This time, I'll ask community media to assist me with opening us up to anyone online who would like to address council this evening. Those joining us via Zoom are able to commute yourself if you'd like to address council. Okay, we'll close the first public comment portion of the meeting at this time, and note that there will be one at the end if you're staying that long. Mayor Whitman, you have a proclamation, I believe?
Certainly do.
All right.
This evening, we're doing a proclamation for Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month, and we'll be presenting this to ABAIT. I'm going to do it, and then he's going to speak to it afterwards. Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month, May 2024. Whereas, ABAIT of Pennsylvania, otherwise known as the Alliance of Bikers Aimed Toward Education, is an organization of motorcyclists dedicated to the protection of the individual rights of motorcyclists through political change, public education, and charitable works. And whereas, as part of this mission, they are also active in the elimination of unfair legislation as it concerns motorcyclists, promoting motorcycle safety through both motors and rider education, such as the Operation Save a Life program, otherwise known as OSAW, and improving the image of motorcycles to the general public. Whereas, the Operation Save a Life program, which is often presented to high school students and civic organizations and the like, teaches driver awareness of motorcyclists on the roadways in an effort to reduce motorists/motorcycled crashes. And whereas, the safety of all York County motorists is a priority, and all highway users have a responsibility in the safe sharing of roadways throughout York County. Over 1 million licensed motorcyclists within the Commonwealth are required to obey current laws to operate a motorcycle safely. Whereas, it is important that all citizens be aware of motorcycles on the streets and highways and recognize the importance of staying alert and being aware of their presence. Whereas, in efforts to reduce the number of motorcycle accidents and fatalities during the month of May, York County will continue their advocacy of motorcycle safety. Now therefore, be it further resolved, I, Sue Ann Whitman, Mayor of the Borough of Hannover, York County, Pennsylvania, I hereby designate the month of May 2024 as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month and encourage all Hannover Borough residents to learn more about the efforts to promote safety and motorcycle awareness to all drivers that share our roadways. Thank you.
Well, you kind of took some of our glory in some of the things you said, but I'll reiterate some things. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name's Dale Brought, 1094 Pine Grove Road, Hannover. I am the coordinator for the Mason-Dixon Chapter of ABAIT we serve Adams and York Counties. The Alliance of Bikers Aimed Toward Education, otherwise known as ABAIT, is dedicated to protecting the individual rights of motorcyclists through political change, charitable work, and public education. The Pennsylvania Department of Transportation has recently reported there are nearly 850,000 licensed motorcyclists within Pennsylvania. Safety begins with awareness. Some may ask, how do you raise awareness? Well, this is all done through education. In 1984, the Pennsylvania Motorcycle Safety Program was created by legislation and one year later began teaching riders of all skill levels the fundamentals needed to reduce risk while operating a motorcycle. In addition to rider education, vehicle driver awareness is essential. With ABAIT of Pennsylvania's Operation Save a Life program, we were able to raise awareness through the eyes of beginning drivers, attending driver's education within school. In 2023, the Mason-Dixon Chapter educated over 2,500 students across York and Adams County, and each year it keeps growing. With this proclamation of May as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month, we are hopeful that we will impact the residents of Hannover Borough and any motorists that are passing through. The Mason-Dixon Chapter of ABAIT of Pennsylvania would like to thank Mayor Whitman and the Hannover Borough Council for declaring the month of May as Motorcycle Safety Awareness Month. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, we have a presentation on our Maximum Parameters Debt Ordinance.
Yes. Good evening, everyone. My name is Jennifer Karen. I am a bond attorney with the law firm of Eckert Siemens in Harrisburg, and I'm here this evening to briefly present the ordinance number 2364, which is before you. Since many of you are probably familiar with the proposed project and have had prior presentations on this topic from other members of the financing team, I'm just going to simply highlight a few points from the ordinance that involves the legal authorization that's necessary to market the bonds and bring them to a close. First, the ordinance authorizes the undertaking of the capital project related to the borough's new public safety and administrative complex. It authorizes the incurrence of what we call general obligation debt under the Local Government Unit Debt Act. It's called general obligation debt because it is secured by the full faith, credit, and taxing power of the borough. The ordinance authorizes the issuance of bonds in the maximum principal amount of $9,300,000 to fund the capital project and to pay the cost of issuance at the time of closing. The ordinance also accepts what we call the bond purchase agreement, and that is a contract between the borough and PNC Capital Markets, who will serve as the underwriter for your bond issue. And that contract will be later supplemented by an addendum to the bond purchase agreement at the time the bonds are finally marketed and priced in the bond market. We refer to the ordinance before you as a parameters ordinance because in order for the bonds to be priced and the addendum to be signed, the bonds must be priced within the parameters or the criteria that are set forth in the ordinance. And I draw your attention to Schedule A to the ordinance, and that sets forth the maximum interest rates and the maximum principal maturities for the series of bonds. The ordinance also appoints M&amp;T to continue to serve as your paying agent on the bonds, as they do in prior bond issues of the borough, pledges the full faith, credit, and taxing power for the repayment of the bonds, and also covenants that the borough shall budget appropriate and pay timely the debt service due on the bonds. Just a few other highlights. It provides that the borough authorize the appropriate filings that we will make with the Department of Community and Economic Development, which include the ordinance if it is to be enacted tonight, along with some other financial information of the borough. It also authorizes and ratifies the legal notices that we handle both before the enactment and post-enactment of this ordinance. It also authorizes the official statement, which is the offering document that the underwriter, again, I mentioned that's PNC Capital Markets, they use the offering document or the official statement in connection with marketing and selling your bonds to investors in the public bond market. And lastly, it permits the authorized officers of the borough to take any such further action as may be necessary to effectuate and bring the bonds to a close, and that is targeted to occur in early June. At this point, I would respectfully request that a roll call vote be taken at the time the ordinance is considered, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Any questions for the presenter? Before we excuse her? Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
This time, the chair requests a motion for approval of the consent agenda.
For Logan.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to conduct business on the consent agenda. Any discussion?
Bill, on that kayak canoe, I was listening to Robert Holt and his questions. Could we table that for more information under H?
Got a motion and a second.
Yeah.
Well, he said, did I have?
Yeah.
Want to take it out?
Yeah. If you would like to remove it, I would suggest you do it by motion to remove that particular item and see if we get a second for it.
I see a motion. I mean, I want to learn more so that we're okay when we do it.
So the motion, before we accept the full motion of the consent agenda, is to remove the kayak and canoe aquatic rental. Is there a second to Counselor Funk's motion?
Okay.
Okay. There is no second, Counselor Funk. So we'll fall back to the first motion, which is the conductance of the business for the consent agenda to be approved as presented. All in favor, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay?
I'll have to say no because I don't understand the poll.
One against, all else for. Motion carries. Turning to page two. For those of you following along here and at home, we will move into the Council Workshop and Finance Committee. Vice President Kress?
Number one, consideration of a motion approving ordinance number 2364 for the Maximum Parameters Debt Ordinance for the financing of the proposed Public Safety and Administration Complex project at 44 Frederick Street, Hannover, PA.
Show motion.
Is there any required discussion before we vote? We'll have Secretary Felix assist us with a roll call vote.
Dr. Rupp?
Yes.
Mr. Ricart?
Four.
Mr. Bub?
Yep.
Mr. Kress?
Yes.
Mr. Lookinbill?
Four.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Yes.
Mrs. Funk?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Mr. Hegberg?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Thank you. Counselor Kress?
Number two, consideration of a motion approving ordinance number 2365 revising the pension benefit formula for Hannover Borough employees' pension plan.
Show motion.
Any required discussion? Seeing none, I'll ask Secretary Felix for her assistance again and perform a roll call vote.
Dr. Rupp?
Yes.
Mr. Ricart?
Four.
Mr. Bub?
Yes.
Mr. Kress?
Yes.
Mr. Lookinbill?
Four.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Yes.
Mrs. Funk?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Mr. Hegberg?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Counselor Kress?
Number three, consideration of a motion to authorize reduction of municipal lien for 206 York Street to judgment and to take steps to execute on the judgment.
I see a motion on that one.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye, please. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. We will move into Planning Commission. Counselor?
Consideration of motion to approve resolution number 1409 for Cherry Tree 5 Sewage Facility Planning Module.
Second. Any discussion?
On that module, the sewage, they might be able to answer it. Is that your cost or the borough's cost to put in that element before it goes to public?
It's our cost.
It's yours?
Yes. We're paying for the installation of the entire system.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries.
Consideration of motion to approve resolution number 1410 for a conditional approval of Cherry Tree 5 Plumary Land Development Plan.
Second. Discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay?
Nay.
One opposed? Any more? Motion carries. Thank you, Counselor Hegberg. Public safety, we're going to have Counselor Funk for the absent Counselor Fuentes.
Number one, consideration of a motion approving ordinance number 2366, amending Chapter 346 of the Hannover Borough Code for restricted parking on Eagle Avenue, stop signs on Fame Avenue at Mau Avenue intersection, and removal of the stop signs no longer needed on East Walnut Street at Fame Avenue and Maustown Road.
Second. Any discussion? Secretary Felix, let's do a roll call.
Dr. Rupp?
Yes.
Mr. Ricart?
Four.
Mr. Bub?
Four.
Mr. Kress?
Yes.
Mr. Lookinbill?
Four.
Mrs. Greenholt?
Yes.
Mrs. Funk?
Yes.
Mr. Rowland?
Yes.
Mr. Hegberg?
Yes.
Motion passes nine to zero.
Counselor Funk, back to you.
Number two, consideration of a motion approving the advertisement of an ordinance for rental registration and inspection.
Second.
I'd like to make a motion to table this.
I'll second that.
Okay. We will handle the motion to table first, so second and first. So to be clear to everyone, there were two motions. The second one will take precedence, which will vote on first and possibly only if it passes, that being to table the previous motion. So I'm specifically asking the question, all those in favor of tabling, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm going to have to ask for a show of hands because there seemed to be a little muddle there. I have one on this side, Counselor Lookinbill, and Counselor Rowland on this side. Any other ayes for tabling? Nays for tabling, please signify by a show of hands. Okay. Motion to table has been denied. So we'll go back to the original motion. I have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion on the motion at this time?
I have a question. So when we advertise this ordinance, I'm under the impression that public safety is going to take it back, and they want to make some changes to it. Are they going to be able to do that?
Manager, you want to address that? We'll try to keep the effort coordinated with the answers here through you.
What I was under the impression from the chair of the Public Safety Committee is that we would walk through the ordinance with public safety at that committee, right?
And when you do that, if you make some changes, then do you have to re-advertise it?
So, so once, we have an ordinance that's been presented to council. That's before council right now. If it's going to be further changed by another, by public safety?
I didn't say that. I said it was going to be discussed at public safety.
Okay. The ordinance that has been presented?
The implementation will be discussed at public safety.
Okay.
Right.
So, so once the ordinance is advertised as is essentially, what council has seen, then council, when it's advertised for action, council votes on that. There cannot be any substantial changes to that without re-advertising the ordinance.
Okay. So it would just be a re-advertising of it?
If changes are made.
If changes are made.
But if I understand the manager correctly, there's no proposed changes to be?
No, there's none.
Well, that's not what Fuentes is telling us. I would disagree with that. Brian and I are under the impression that, we got that document the night of the talk of it. We didn't even have a chance to go through the ordinance. And we went home and went through the ordinance, and I have some questions about some of the things there, and I know Brian does. And so, you know, I'm not passing anything until we have a long discussion about it.
So I, you know, I'm not passing anything until we have a long discussion about what some of these, some of these things are.
Well, my understanding was, when we were at the meeting, was that we were going to address the entire ordinance. And if we had questions, we'd get answers to them. But we have basically worked on this for almost, what, how many, how many years, Chuck?
Fifteen.
Huh?
Two or three at least.
Two or three. And, you know, I don't have a problem taking it back to Public Safety. And Brian wanted to read, take 20 minutes of our time and to go over and to read each section as we go. Now, if there, if we compile any changes, we put it all together and go back and advertise. I can't see, and it's going to be two years till, you know, we just need to get something started. But, you know, if we have to re-advertise, is that a big thing? I would sooner do what Brian wanted to do. Open it up, read it, discuss it, give it to the public, okay? If there are changes that we don't, we want changes on that, then we simply go back and present it and re-advertise. But I want to know what this particular ordinance says, and I want to have answers to all of our questions. And I think we're entitled to that. So at this point, why not take it under advertisement, allow us to take it back like Brian wanted to do, and do it the right way that it should be done, and then we'll get our answers to everything. Is that agreed upon?
It is by me.
I'll ask the solicitor of this comment, but what I think I'm hearing is the middle ground here is, we're talking about two different things. You're talking about advertising one thing, which we should not make substantive changes to prior to adoption with your request to take what's been advertised back and actually use it in a working environment, to likely substantially change it.
Well, Brian didn't say change it. He says, I want to, I want to, I want to present it to the public, huh?
If you, well, and if there's a modification of that, then, then it would, it would fall out of the scope of what's been advertised, which is not fair that we would vote on that.
Right, correct.
So Counsel, can you help me potentially that if it were to come back from the committee where it is discussed with a committee recommendation and public input, that if it would be substantially changed, then council would have an appetite or really a responsibility to re-advertise the new resultant document?
Correct.
Okay.
So where we're at at this point in time is we have the motion to proceed forward with the advertisement of the document as it exists. And to be very bluntly clear, advertisement is not adoption.
There are two separate processes.
But I feel like, why would you advertise something if you're not even...
You have to start somewhere, Mayor.
You have to, yeah.
You have to start somewhere.
You have to start somewhere. But Brian's main goal, since he's not here tonight, he sat and talked with me on the phone, and he said, I just want to present this, this ordinance that we're going to advertise, and I want to understand it thoroughly. He did say that. He said, and I want the people, all of Hanover, to be present to be able to hear the complete ordinance. Did he not, Carol?
Yes.
Yes.
But he also told me there were several parts with it that he's not comfortable with.
No, he didn't say it to me.
That's what he told me.
So, no.
So I feel like I don't know why y'all pushing it forward.
Okay, so everyone understands that this is simply for the, for the advertisement.
Right, right.
This, then, our, our way of doing, of handling this versus with council is going to send it back to the Safety Committee and let them take a crack at it and see what happens. If you like it, you like it. It's been advertised. If you change it, you change it. We rediscuss it, we re-advertise it, we keep going.
Sounds fair enough.
All in favor of the motion to advertise, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Would you oppose?
Oh, sorry, didn't hear you. Okay, one opposed?
Louder.
Okay, we will transition to Water Resources. This job's hard enough. Counsel Kress, will you take Water Resources for me?
Consideration, excuse me, consideration of a motion approving the settlement agreement and change order in the amount of $71,000 with KC Construction for the Shepherd Meyer Dam Rehabilitation Project.
Any further discussion on that one? All in favor, signify by saying aye, please. Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. With that, we will go into the mayor's report. Mayor Whitman.
Okay, Mayor Highlights for March of 2024. March 4th, Senator Phillips Hill, State Rep. Kate Clunk, and Mike Jones, Councilman Fuentes and I, along with local business and faith leaders, met with the Libre Initiative to discuss how we can work together to promote limited government, empower families, and ensure economic prosperity for all. March 5th, I met with Reverend Dr. Kathy Hoffman and Darlene Clink at St. Matthew's Church to talk about what's going on in the community and how they can help as they make their future plans. March 7th, the project executive committee had our first introductory presentation to community business and medical leaders at the Bear Center. This successful well-attended event has garnered a lot of enthusiasm as we continue to grow our steering committee to move this exciting project forward to benefit Hanover and eventually all of York County. March 12th, the Director of Engineering, Eric Mayes, and I met with State Rep. Kate Clunk to go over the borough's status of our current capital projects, pending funding requests, and further capital improvement initiatives. March 14th, Director of Human Resources, Amy Hill, Councilman Fuentes and Rowland, and I attended the Library Board of Governors meeting. This was Councilwoman Darlene Funk's first meeting on the Library Board of Governors. March 19th, David Longfield Smith, Matthew Jackson, and I presented the Blue Zones project to the Hanover Rotary. March 21st, Borough Manager Margie Lewis and I met with the Director of the YWCA, Jody Schaefer, and Gloria Marcott of Soul Punch, a coaching program that helps women to command their power and safety, to help integrate and find more ways to bring this powerful program to our community for all age groups of women. March 23rd, council people, borough employees, and I attended an all-day retreat together. We began the day by touring all of the borough's facilities from the dams, water treatment, sewer, maintenance, and transfer station. This was very interesting and was impressive to see all the knowledgeable and dedicated employees we have and the complicated work they do to keep the borough running smoothly every day. Later, we had a facilitated workshop to help define some of our challenges and solutions moving forward. March 25th, I was invited to join the celebration of veteran executive leadership CEO Troy Bean, a retired Army Major and Bronze Star recipient, transfer the acquisition of Sigmund Forced Air Systems Incorporated from Ron Sigmund, a Navy veteran, and his wife Debbie. This marks a significant milestone for both companies showcasing a dedication to excellence and commitment to preserving the exceptional service and values established by Ron and Debbie. March 28th, the Hanover community, local leadership, the Chamber, and Main Street Hanover welcomed Greer's Burger Garage to downtown. We thanked chef and owner Ethan Greer and his family and developer Jordan Ilias for investing in our downtown. Go grab a burger, they also have vegetarian options available, and check out the decor and the view from the upstairs windows. They are located at the corner of East Chestnut and Railroad Street. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mayor Whitman. At this time, is there anyone in the room, as I opened up for public comment, who'd like to say anything? Seeing none, we'll go to community media for our online followers.
If you're joining us via Zoom, you can unmute yourself if you'd like to address council.
Seeing none, I will request a motion to adjourn.
Show motion.
Thank you, Counsel Press, Counsel Funk. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed or adjourned? Thank you.